Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call out of recess Lee County's Zoning Board of Appeals hearing on petitions 22P-1598. Nope. 1600 and 1601. Lehman Solar One and Lehman Solar One LLC's request for special use permits to conduct and operate a solar energy system in Bradford Township here in Lee County. In case you've lost your Zoom meeting information, but maybe listening to us on YouTube but can't get back on to Zoom, the Zoom meeting ID is 915-3923-9154. And the password is, as always, 209840. If you want to morph over to YouTube on your computer or cell phone, use your browser, go to www.youtube.com. In the search bar, type Lee County IL, short for Illinois, Zoning Board of Appeals. Don't worry about upper or lowercase letters. Find the date you want to watch. Presumably that would be tonight, January 25th. Click on that and you should be seeing and hearing us here in the old Lee County courthouse. If you have any trouble with any of this, you can always call Ms. Duffy's technical assistance hotline, 815-973-3449. I know the presence tonight of the Chair of the ZBA, Mr. Forster. It's Vice Chair, Mr. Burrow. Mr. Hughes is present. Mr. Myers is present. Ellie Huss is present. Ms. Duffy, the zoning officer boss is present, as is her able right hand, Ellis. Charlie Boonstra, excellent state attorney from Lee County is present. On behalf of the petitioner, Mr. Buchberger is present. Jonathan from Lee County IT is present. Our court reporter is present. Of course, I'm present. That makes, in the hearing room, 1, 2, 3, 4, 8, 11 people. I see two interested parties on Zoom making a small attendance of 13 people. If we do finish evidence tonight, I'd like to ask the board to help me and everybody to help me remember to pick the next date. We'll have to do that, but let's not do that now. And Mr. Buchberger, you were on the witness stand. If you want to retake, come on up and have a seat again, that'd be great. And since the sun has set on your last oath, do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Help you get started. Remind us of your name.
My name is Brent Buchberger from Summit.
Good, sorry. Go ahead.
Summit Ridge Energy, and I'm representing the petitioner Lehman Solar One LLC and Lehman Solar One A LLC.
Okay. I think you have a few exhibits for us tonight.
I do. Can I bring them all up?
Absolutely.
And introduce them?
Yep.
Where should I set them? Because I do have a number of them. Should I put them on the boards table?
That'd be great. And then pass out one to Callie, and then I, and Dee, and Charlie. We'll give you a few, you know, a little while to do that.
So I do have additional copies of the original petitions that were submitted for Lehman Solar One LLC, which is petition number 22-P-1600. And also, so I've got that as Pet 4, two additional copies. I've got additional copies of the Lehman Solar One LLC.
Say that again. I just zoned out. Four was Lehman what?
Lehman Solar One LLC.
Okay. Got it. Okay.
And then Lehman Solar One A, the original petition material that was submitted, is Pet 5.
Pet 5, okay.
I also have additional equipment specifications for Lehman Solar One LLC. That's Pet 6.
Got it.
And I also have additional equipment specifications for Lehman Solar One A LLC as Pet 7. I have a list of community meeting notices that were sent, a list of individuals that they were addressed to, and a copy, a sample copy of the letter that was provided for the community notices.
Is that all together?
Yes, that covered both Lehman One and One A.
But I mean, and the letter?
Yes.
They're all bound together?
They're, yes, stapled. The list, individual copies of the list and a copy of the letter.
Okay. And that's Pet 8, I assume?
That's Pet 8. I have an address list for the ZBA hearing notices, and that is for Lehman One and Lehman One A. And the individual notices were provided, but I have the entire list with the tracking numbers for the certified mail receipts that we've provided. And then, and also just a copy of the map that was provided to Summit Ridge Energy, to the petitioner for use of developing the list.
And that's included in the nine?
I also have an email, which is, at this time, simply confirmation back from the village of Franklin Grove that they have received the information, you know, related to the project, and that it's been, you know, distributed to the village president and clerk. That's Pet 10. And a bit out of order, but I also have the conceptual layout for Lehman Solar One LLC as Pet 2, copies of, large format copies of that, the layout that was submitted with the petition originally. And also, I have large format copies of the conceptual layout for Lehman Solar One A, introduced this evening as Pet 3.
Okay. Is that, if that's it, why don't you just start handing them out?
Yep.
Thanks.
Is there anybody that doesn't have the layouts to avoid?
Callie may not.
Okay. Okay.
Everybody's got an application, don't they? One in One A?
Yes.
In that case, Brent, all we need is Callie to get her, not Ellie, Callie. See, I did it. Had the court reporter get one. You got, you, okay. Make a pile for her, if you would. Because as the court reporter, she needs it for her record. I don't know what she does with them after a few years, but I'm not going to ask. I'm not going to tell you what my, off the record, I'm not going to tell you what my wife did with hers after.
Okay.
Thanks.
These were not included in that, that stuff you're handling.
These are additional. I've got one.
Well, let's not have a conversation. It's tough on her. Thank you, sir. I got one of those. Oh, I see. Brent, it's hard on, well, let's go off the record while he's, go ahead.
End us one and we can pass it around.
Okay. Done with that, sure. All right, I'm going to help you walk through some of these. Let's go in order now. Please tell us what consists of petitioners number 2 and 3.
Petitioner evidence number 2 and 3 are the conceptual solar energy system plans that were submitted with the petition applications for special use. So they, and they depict the solar project general arrangement. They show the racking and major electrical equipment and fence layout, along with access drives.
And why don't you tell us what 4 and 5 are?
4 and 5 are copies of the original application that were submitted for each petition.
All right. Now, moving to, excuse me, number 6, what is it? And 7, I guess.
Yeah, 6 and 7. So 6 and 7 are supplemental material describing equipment specifications, typical equipment specifications for the community solar projects that Summit Ridge develops. So these are additional racking information, a typical medium voltage transformer specification, and a typical inverter, string inverter, that would be utilized on the project.
So they are specs for tracker, transformer, and inverter?
Correct.
What is number 8?
8 is the, is the list that the petitioner utilized, a landowner contact list that was used specific for the projects being considered, Lehman One and Lehman One A, adjacent landowners that were notified of the community meeting.
Do you have that? I don't have.
I unfortunately only brought four copies of that inadvertently, so I've handed out some.
Okay. I got nine, Glenn. I don't know. One. Yeah.
So 8 is the list of landowners that were notified, and also a sample of the letter that was provided to encourage participation at the community meeting.
Okay. And 9?
9 is the list of adjacent landowners that were notified for the ZBA public hearing, both for, that is for both Lehman One and Lehman One A petitions. That also includes the tracking numbers for the certified mail receipts, and also included in that exhibit is the map that was provided by the Lee County GIS department to identify
Okay. And 10?
10 is an email correspondence with the village of Franklin Grove's, the village attorney, simply confirming that the village has received information regarding the Lehman One and Lehman One A projects.
And have they further communicated anything other than what you, what is shown in 10?
Yes, we, I've had a couple of phone calls with the zoning department, representatives of the zoning department.
Of the village?
Of the village of Franklin Grove. My understanding is that the village will be, the planning commission and president of the village will be meeting to discuss the project.
When did these phone calls take place?
Over the past several days.
Do you remember which days?
Beginning Friday of last week, I believe. Have to consult the calendar, but over the last, Friday of last week, yesterday, and today.
So the Friday, the 20th, yesterday, the 24th, no, 23rd, and today, the 24th? Is that right?
Correct.
You know, with whom you spoke?
I spoke with, I know I've got one of the names. I spoke with John Nicholson, I believe is the incoming head of the planning commission for Franklin Grove. And I also spoke, I'd have to check my notes, but I spoke with the current zoning officer.
By planning commission, you mean Franklin Grove Planning Commission?
That's correct. The Franklin Grove Planning Commission.
And who else?
The current zoning officer. I don't have that individual's name. And I've also discussed the project with the village's attorney on the phone, and then provided the email correspondence.
Do you remember who that was? Do you remember if you told any one or more of those people that there was an ongoing ZBA hearing?
Yes. I've informed each and every of those individuals that there's an ongoing hearing.
All right. All right. I'll let you pick it up from there. Is there other testimony you wanted to give?
No, I've got no additional prepared testimony.
All right. So going around the horn, how about you, Ms. Duffy?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Boonstra?
No, sir. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Hinkle?
With regards to your exhibits, petitioners 6 and 7, have you confirmed that that is the equipment that will be utilized, or is that proposed?
That's proposed. We have only, the only equipment that's been procured for the project are the solar modules, which that spec sheet was already included in the original application. The, I've used the term typical, since the application material was submitted to today, are due to, you know, global supply chain constraints, you know, a variety of reasons. An example is the inverter technology is already, I mean, it's the same type of equipment, right? It's a 125-kilowatt string inverter, but our preferred, you know, supplier for that equipment has changed over the last six months. So what's included in this supplemental equipment specs is what we would procure today if we were to place a PO for the equipment. And, and then, as I stated, like, the modules themselves have already been procured, and that's, and that's already included in the original package.
Okay. Nothing further.
All right. ZBA, Mr. Forster.
No questions.
Let's see, Mr. Burrow?
Just a couple. Based on the information you passed out, just look at the petition, A, or Pet 8, rather. Those names look like they may have been about five years old, and of course, I think you said that you hadn't only been with the project for six months or so. Where did that list come from? Because several of those people have passed away since the list was made. Is that, was that the original list, you think, from 2018, or when you first filed?
Yeah, I mean, the exercise, when we sent out the community meeting notices, was we did start with the original list, and then we, we did attempt to verify that using County GIS, just, we didn't receive a list from the zoning office, but we did utilize the County GIS tool to verify mailing addresses. That's how we generate the list.
Okay. The solar panels that you are looking and getting, where are those? What company or where are they manufactured? What country do you know?
The manufacturer is Hanwha, and I can't speak for exactly where the panels will be manufactured. I know they have a facility in Georgia, and I believe, I believe they're opening another facility in Texas. But there, the panels will be manufactured in the United States. I'm not sure exactly which, you know, shipment, you know, will arrive, you know, which factory will produce the shipment for this project, but the product, the panels have been ordered, so the capacity's been reserved. So again, the type of module and the wattage for the module has been established for the project because we've purchased it. Just what, but whether or not, again, which facility it gets shipped out of is going to be probably dependent on timing of the project.
Thinking of the panels, what is the size that you're thinking they're going to be?
The modules are roughly four by eight.
And these are going to be, they're going to be tracking?
That's correct.
So they, so they won't be the double, well, whatever the term is, double-sided panels that would pick up solar energy from the reflection off the ground, then?
No, they are bifacial modules, basically meaning that there's no backside, there's a transparent backside of the module, such that the silicon wafer itself can get exposed from both, you know, direct and indirect irradiance or sunlight.
What's the amount of energy that they advertise that they pick up from the underside?
It's a very good question. My understanding is approximately 15 to 20% additional.
I was trying to, when we mentioned that, I didn't know either.
It's dependent on a number of factors. Obviously, it's going to vary throughout the year, but that's, that's my understanding of it.
If it's anything similar to that, that's pretty substantial then. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, a couple of questions. First one is relative to petitions 8 and 9.
You mean exhibits?
Petitioners' exhibits, yeah. Thank you. Petitioners' exhibits 8 and 9. There were seven parties that the community meeting notices were sent to. However, there are, I believe, eight different parties. There appears to be a John Sturgis who was not sent notice of the community meeting but is in that group of notices about the hearing. Why the difference?
I mean, the difference is simply just that was our determined list, like Summit Ridge Energy's determined list of adjacent property owners for the community meeting. And then for the ZBA, for the formal hearing meeting, we worked with the list that was provided by the county.
All right. Then I'm going to get away from the other petitions at this point, but wanted to ask you a little bit about the glare analysis. Would you, and I know it's stated in the petition, but would you clarify the difference between the green and the yellow glare?
Yes. My understanding is that the difference is in the type of afterimage that's generated following exposure to green or yellow glare. And I would need to reference the study. I don't have it up here in front of me, but one, essentially, one generates a lasting afterimage and one is a momentary afterimage. So it's the severity of the, the impact.
Okay. Let me read the information in the application for you to confirm. It indicates green. It indicates green glare is low potential for temporary afterimage. Would you agree?
That's my understanding.
Confirm that. Okay, and can you confirm that yellow glare is potential for temporary afterimage?
That's my understanding as well.
Okay. Having confirmed that, is there any state or federal standard for an acceptable amount of yellow glare on a observation point?
My, my work in that matter has been limited to FAA standards and reviews. And my understanding is that there are limits on that glare per the FAA's standards. But I am not aware of any limits for receptors other than aircraft.
Okay. If there are. Bear with me a moment. You're not aware of any regulations or criteria other than for aircraft, you said?
That's correct.
So the fact that there is 766 minutes of yellow glare annually on Observation Point 3, which is on the tollway, appears to have no material bearing?
I, I do not know. I'd have to consult with a transportation engineer.
Okay. But again, to reconfirm, to your knowledge, there are no state or federal criteria for the amount of yellow glare other than for FAA.
That's correct, to my knowledge.
I think. Yeah, I think it, that's my questions.
Okay, Mr. Meyer?
No questions.
Missus?
For the notification of community meeting, is this a complete and total list?
That is the portion of the list that was generated for the Lehman 1 and 1A project. The community meeting was, there's one common community meeting held for seven, at the time, seven proposed community solar projects. So we notified landowners associated with all seven of those anticipated petitions at the time.
Did you, so did you notify Lee County Board?
No, no formal notification was sent to the board.
Okay, and did you notify the township in which Lehman 1 and 1A would be constructed?
No notification was sent to the township.
Okay. Have you had any further communication with the township since the last portion of the meeting?
I've received no further correspondence from the, from the township, from Bradford Township.
And what attempts have been made to contact them since the last meeting?
Just a follow-up phone call.
Okay, have you sent an email at any point to the township or anyone associated with it?
I did send an email to the township representative prior to the previous hearing.
Do you know about when that was?
That would have been a day or two prior to the previous, our previous meeting. I can provide that email.
That was your first attempt at contact directly with the township?
That's correct.
Okay, and for Pet 9, do you have a sample of what was sent as the notice of the zoning board hearing to these addresses?
I can provide a sample. I don't have one with me tonight.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. That's me. Some follow-up questions. What was presented at the community meeting regarding Lehman 1 and 1A?
I, at the community meeting, I brought a large format poster board of the conceptual layout, the same layout that was ultimately submitted for review. I actually have a, I can show a copy of what I presented.
No, that's all right. Just what, just what you, okay.
So I have here, this is the layout that was presented on poster board. And I, I brought markers, right? Because the intent was to receive community feedback. So for any members that showed up, the intent was to physically mark up this poster board such that some of Ridge Energy could bring that back to our design team and incorporate any considerations or input from the community. In addition to the, the poster board, I brought, you know, photos and videos of our projects as examples to spur conversation around this, the proposed development.
I assume, well, I shouldn't assume. Were there questions from the, those assembled?
There were no attendees at the community meeting that were, that had questions regarding the two proposed projects.
Do you commit to submitting a fire protection and prevention plan to the Lee County Zoning and Planning Office as a condition precedent to obtaining a building permit?
Yes, and we agree that that should be a condition.
Do you promise to comply with all Lee County setback requirements?
Yes, as noted on our submitted layout, that, that note is already on our layout and we've actually taken a conservative approach to the property lines to ensure that that setback is met.
There's apparently one adjacent dwelling of a non-participating proper, or residential. So let me start that again. There's apparently one adjacent dwelling of a non-participating property owner to the proposed project. Has that person or persons been contacted to off, to offer their Lee County ordinance screening options?
I've placed a phone call. I have not sent a letter yet. That, that adjacent property was notified of the project. But I have not received any feedback and I have not yet had an opportunity to discuss the visual screening options. However, I do commit to ensuring that that, an agreement is reached prior to submission for a building permit.
And if one is not reached, you understand that you'll, you owe that person some financial sum that's calculated under the ordinance?
Yes, my understanding is that even if the individual has not reached or no agreement is met, the project is still obligated to present to that landowner a payment equal, equivalent to the estimated cost of screening for their property.
Would either of the proposed projects land or an air traffic approach path?
Not to my knowledge.
On the conceptual layout, there's a short access road, I'm going to call it a spur, for lack of a better word, leading north, shown on the Lehman 1A conceptual plan. But that's not an entrance, is it? It's just a vehicle turnaround or parking?
That's right. That's an additional vehicle turnaround prior to the gate. So there are additional, there are, there's a turnaround adjacent to the equipment pad within the fence. And that's if a vehicle went down the access road and the gate's locked, they don't, they, they need a way to turn around. And that spur affords them a way to turn their vehicle around.
What is, presently, when do you actually, when do you plan to actually start construction of one or both of these projects?
Presently, the plan would be late summer 2023, or as dictated by the utility schedule.
You agree that you've not produced a map of the leasehold area's surface draining pattern?
That's correct. We have not yet.
When will you do that?
We would produce that map in coordination with drainage permit application requirements. We would have a pre-application meeting with the county engineer to ensure that both on the exhibits that we'd be preparing and our methodology for runoff calculations, that we have alignment and an understanding of the county supplemental requirements. And at that time, that surface drainage map would be generated and reviewed with the county engineer.
Assuming you've visited the project site on certainly one or probably more occasions, to what purpose is the land now dedicated?
For the 2022 planting season, it would, the plot was dedicated to corn production.
Row crop?
That's correct.
If road use agreements were mandated by the county board, would you, on behalf of the developer, agree to negotiate in good faith to reach such an accord?
Yes, our expectation is that county, use of county roads will be required for the construction and operation of the project. And we would expect to enter into road use agreements with the county prior to issuance of the building permit.
All right, I don't have any other questions. Anything you want to add?
No, I thank everyone for their time.
You may step down.
Should have asked Zoomers.
Zoomers, thank you. Thank you. Zoomers, any questions? Raise your hand by, let's see, going down to the bottom, hitting the icon that says participants, and then the raise hand. Box tab. Don't see any. Do you, Jonathan? Okay, now you can step down. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. All right, Ms. Duffy, you have any evidence you want to present? She's standing up. Soundly swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth, all truth in English.
Do.
Have a seat. I see you have some pieces of paper in front of you. And they're marked exhibits. How many have you got?
I also have exhibits for 1 and 1A, the application.
We'll pass that.
Okay. I have, for exhibit three, notification to the adjoining property owners in the form of certified mailings.
And how, you got that marked as three?
Exhibit three. Exhibit four is the Soil and Water Conservation District Report, the natural resources. This was done July 19th, 2018.
Thank you. What else?
And for exhibit five, I have the certification of publication, certificate of publication from the newspapers.
For five and six? I mean, for, for.
Exhibit five is for both Lehman 1 and Lehman 1A.
Okay, you've got any other exhibits?
I have our, the sign was posted out at the property. So I have that posting also. So that would be exhibit six.
Got it.
That's all I have.
Besides the sign out at the project site, where else did you advertise the ZBA hearing to be held?
Out on the bulletin board outside this boardroom and also on our website. The county's website.
Under your, under your department's pages or?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we've gone through those. Do you have any other pieces of paper?
No, I don't.
Any other testimony you want to give?
Nothing.
Great. Witness questions, Mr. Boonstra?
No, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Hinkle, now's your chance.
The land or the resource report. Is there anything you can share with us about the soils from that report? Land evaluation, soil scores, a summary.
The LISA scored at 213, which is below our site assessment and land evaluation scores. There was no PI given back then. All it did state was that that nearly 100% of the soil series on this parcel is considered to have prime farmland soils. And then according to the map, 63% of the parcel has hydroic inclusion soils. And that's all that was stated there. Okay, nothing further.
Okay, zoning, or Mr. Boonstra? Did I ask you? I'm sorry if I did. Thanks. Mr. Forster?
No questions.
Mr. Burrow?
I think she's covered it. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes?
Relative to the soil conservation study that was done in 2018, you said, right?
Right.
Have you confirmed that, and I'm assuming that there hasn't been much change on that land, but have you confirmed that that study is still valid?
It is still valid. I talked to Brendan Merriman down at the Soil and Water.
Relative to the notices that were provided for the community meeting and for the ZBA meeting, as presented in the petitioners' exhibits, us eight and nine, are, were those consistent with the county's expectations of notices to be sent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I do believe there was a question asked about if the townships were notified, that is, they are notified through my department, not necessarily the petitioners. So township supervisor and the township road commissioner was notified of this hearing.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
No questions.
Missus?
None.
Mr. Brimburger, questions? Zoomers? Raise your hand. Give you a few seconds here to click on raise hand. Okay, you can step down. Painless? All right. Let's see. You can't, you can't. So people on Zoom, there's no interested parties in the courtroom, so we'll default right away to the Zoom people. Do either of you people on Zoom wish to present any evidence, witnesses of your own or your own testimony? If so, click raise hand now, please. All right, I don't see any raised hands. I think I've been through everybody, so unless I am missing something, that should conclude the presentation of the evidence. And we'll go into talking about. And we'll go into talking about dates for fact-finding and recommendation. I was sort of counting on this week to do that. I can't next week. So we're going to start with Monday, February 6th, Tuesday, February 7th, and Wednesday, February 8th. I'm going to try and speed it up a little. This might, I might learn a lesson, but with regard to those dates, February 6th, February 7th, February 8th at 6 o'clock, do you have any problems with any of those dates, Ms. Duffy?
No, I have no problem with those dates.
As far as you know, any problem with the courtroom on any of those dates? How about you, Mr. Forster?
No problems.
Mr. Burrow?
I think I'm busy the 6th. That's a Monday?
That is a Monday.
Yeah, I'm busy the 6th, otherwise...
The other two are good?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Hughes?
I am not available on the 6th either.
Mr. Meyer?
I should be good on all three of those days.
Ms. Huss?
Yes.
Yes, meaning all are okay?
All of them.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes, all work.
Okay. Mr. Boonstra?
All should be fine for me.
Let's see. Mr. Brimburger, you're certainly welcome here, but there's no necessity to be here. How about you, Kelly? Wow. Okay, well, we had two no's on the 6th and yeses on all the rest, so the two available session dates are Tuesday, February 7th, and Wednesday, February 8th. We will recess until Tuesday, February 7th, 6 o'clock, here on the courtroom on the third floor of the Old Lee County Courthouse.
Judge?
Yes.
Before we recess?
Sure.
Mr. Brimburger didn't receive an opportunity to give a closing statement?
You're right. He didn't last time, and I sort of jumped over it, but do you want to make any closing statement?
No.
Okay. Any Zoomers want to make a closing statement? Raise your hand or use that raise hand icon. Sorry about that, and thank you, Alice. Any raised hands? Okay, all right. We're back to February 7th, Tuesday, February 7th, 6 o'clock, here in the third floor of Old Lee County Courthouse. See you then, everybody, and I will get out some proposed motions.